Good evening and welcome to the February 26 City Council Meeting. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everybody's staying dry. If I could ask, Melissa, would you be so kind as to leave us in the plexi?
I move to the end to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Melissa. We also want to thank the Garden Club for providing the fore arrangements that they do for us. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. And if there's anybody that wants to speak on items that are not on the agenda, speaker card, because it's going to be next is public comment. And then again, if you wanted to speak on any items that are on the agenda when they come up, please speaker card with the city clerk. And so, public comment, items not on the agenda.
Barbara Lareya.
Yes, good evening. Two quick items. One is this situation called correspondence that for many years used to be on the agendas because I used to go to every meeting. It's called correspondence. It was at the beginning of the meeting and it's when important letters and so forth were sent to the city. An example is I found out about a letter from the Japanese-American internment camp project recently only because someone sent it to me. I want to donate. The public doesn't know about this letter because it's not on the agenda. So I think we should reinstate the correspondence part of the agenda. And it could be things like also from FEMA or anything that affects the whole city. So again, it's called correspondence and for about 15 years it was on each agenda at the beginning of the meeting. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the article I read in the San Mateo Daily Journal today about the possibility of raising sales tax. As a citizen, I feel this is really unacceptable to people who are in the middle and lower classes. It hurts the middle and lower classes more than anyone else. We, in our city, when I looked at what the median income is for San Bruno versus like South City, Millbury, and so on and so forth, we're lower as a household median income. So I think it would hurt us more than it would because I've been told a lot of other cities have a higher sales tax. We can't keep raising the taxes on people. The water rates have gone up tremendously since I've lived here. Every year, since the 90s, every year but one year, the water rates have gone up. And I want to thank councilmembers Medina and it was one other councilmember, I think it was the mayor, who voted no on the water rate raise last time. So again, I think the sales tax is wrong. We shouldn't have to keep taking from people. We need to look at other ways to cut things in our budget. For example, not hiring consultants all the time, maybe doing some things in-house. And I feel it is wrong and it hurts mostly the poorer people. They go to the store, they buy diapers, they buy this and that. They're always going to pay more tax on that type of thing. So I feel that the council and whoever else is involved should seriously consider not raising our sales tax. It doesn't hurt the wealthier people in the city as much as it hurts the lower and the middle class. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Barbara, and nice to see you. Anyone else? Anybody else wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? The audience, okay. Move to consent.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Are there items council wishes to pull? Please, Mark.
Item G.
G. And then also, before we take action, I'd like to bring up the Finance Director in regards to H. There's an item that needs to be corrected. Let's do H first.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Keith DiMartini, the Finance Director for the city. I wanted to make a clarifying point on the Development Impact Fee Ordinance before you this evening on consent calendar. On the bottom of page seven, it's section eight, it states that this ordinance shall take effect 30 days from the date of its passage. This ordinance shall be published according to law. On the resolution that the City Council adopted two weeks ago at the hearing, it does say that the resolution will take effect on May 1st, 2019. And so just to clarify, the new development impact fees, if the council is to approve them this evening, will take effect on May 1st, 2019.
Thank you. I so far have heard item G to be pulled. Anything else? If not action from council?
Move to approve the remaining items. Second.
Motion made in second to approve all but item G. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five-oh. And now let's go to item G. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an extension fiscal year 2018-19 for consultant service agreement with West Coast Code Consultants, Inc. for billing division staffing services in the amount not to exceed $172,200. Mark.
Right, thank you. I pulled this item to get a little more clarity on what was going on and I was able to submit some questions unfortunately late today, but I tried to give staff a little advance notice to my questions so that they could be more prepared to answer them. So the first question there, in the staff report, it mentions that this West Coast Consultants have worked for the city in the past. And so at this point, we're approving a contract. And so what was the previous contract? And maybe you can give us some background on the relationship of West Coast Consultants?
City Manager. Sure. Javon Grogan, City Manager. So we'll answer that between myself and Darcy Smith, the city's Community Development Director. I'll start off by saying the city's service delivery model for building plan check, so when a building application comes in and that building application is reviewed, is actually to not have that be reviewed by staff, we use an outside firm for that. Many cities do. We have had a similar contract since 2014 with that review being conducted by an outside contractor. In addition, we use this outside contractor for a contract sap that provides onsite plan permit check services at the counter. And so part of it is implementing our service delivery model, which is not having staff, onsite personnel, to provide the service. Part of your other question is why is this coming to you now? And so these funds are approved in the budget. Oftentimes, when funds are approved in the budget for personnel items, they do not come to council because you're essentially through the budget authorization authorizing personnel. There are really three buckets of personnel expenditures and each of them are treated separately. So the first budget is when you approve money in the personnel section for staff. For the most part, those are city employees. A contract does not come before the city council. It's a full-time body. There are some times where we use those funds for a limited services person like we did for when we currently had a department head vacancy. When we're using personnel dollars, those do not come before council because they're already approved in the budget for that specific purpose. There's another area where we provide contract services where we do not bring those contracts to council and those are for reimbursables. So if a application walks in and, for example, we have to hire a consultant to do a traffic study, those contracts do not come to the city council because we are not using public dollars for that. We are using the consult, the applicant's dollars for that and so we have a reimbursable. But the third type is when we do come to council and those are when we are hiring someone on a professional services contract, your typical contractor, to do limited service work. Those contracts do come before council and that is the contract that you have before you. This contract is over the city manager's spending authority because it's over $75,000 and that is why the contract is before you. But this is implementing our historical service delivery model where we do not have a building plan check city employee. Those building permit applications are reviewed by a private firm in this coast, in this case, West Coast Cold Consultants.
Okay, that's good background. So this contract that we're approving now is good for the end of 2019? So we have a $172,000 contract that is going to be used for the next three months? Or does it go past that fiscal year? How does that work?
So this contract would be retroactive to July 1st.
Retroactive, okay.
And it would cover the work for the full fiscal year.
Got it, got it. Okay. So how do these fees compare to our other fees? Are we taking note of where we stand on what we're being charged for this service compared to other cities? Or what was the amount that was last year and then how much more did it go up this year? Just curious because we didn't see this before.
Sure, so we pay the staff an hourly rate when they're at the city offices and the hourly rates escalated a tiny amount comparable with sort of similar COLAs you've seen for other city staff contracts, so 3% to 5%. The off-site fee, which is 65% of the plan check revenue, that's pretty standard throughout other cities.
Okay.
And we do have another firm that does it, CSG. They've been on board with the city. So we do actually have two consultants doing that. That contract is a lesser amount, so it's executed city manager level.
Okay.
And that doesn't include any staffing and that's the same rate structure.
Okay. So this contract will go through the fiscal year?
Yes.
And then through the budget, we'll see this again?
Yes, so you will see a similar contract here for 2018-19. I do want to add one thing because I think it's a part of the question you're asking, which is, is the cost, are we receiving a good value by having this service contracted out? And so as a new city manager, what I'll tell you is that we will look into that. At $172,000, what I'll tell you is overall, I think we're getting a good deal because you don't have the long-term personnel liability costs tied to this contract. You are essentially having contract personnel review a development application. Now, some cities do use a different service delivery model, which is they have a minimal onsite, full-time city personnel because this work does come in every year. And then when you hit a heavy time in development, you contract out that additional amount with a consultant. The way we do it now is all of the building permits are reviewed by an outside firm. I'm committing that I want to take a look at that, but I'll tell you, my gut is that we're getting a pretty good dollar-for-dollar deal because we're not paying the fully loaded cost of a full-time position nor having those long-term liabilities.
And lastly, and we are looking at how our total internal cost recovery system is going to be based going forward. That's one of the projects that we're looking at.
Yeah, that is our comprehensive fee project that we talked about before.
Got it, your question. Okay. So we have item G. Any action from council?
Move to approve item G. Second.
Motion made in second to approve G. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-oh. Okay. That takes care of consent. Let's go on to Conductive Business.
Item 6A, appoint citizens to fill two vacancies on San Bruno's Planning Commission. So tonight before you, we have an item to appoint citizens to fill two vacancies on San Bruno's Planning Commission. The applicants for consideration tonight are Tom Hamilton, Valentine Morgan, Stephen Seymour, and Mark Tobin.
Okay. And then to our new Development Director, give just a little bit of background.
Sure, so this is a rare occurrence that we have two vacancies on the Planning Commission. We did have some longstanding Planning Commissioners retire. As you know, there's no term limit, so some of them were with us for quite a long period of time and served us well. The Planning Commission is a body of the city that's really just one step below the City Council in that they're involved in reviewing the policy issues and also development projects. And this year, as you know, with the YouTube Phase 1 campus, some large development projects. So they make recommendations often to you as sort of your one step below you, looking at land use issues in the city and looking at long-range planning issues such as the Bay Hill specific plan. So the Planning Commissioner has to be sort of able to represent a variety of views of the community, various interests, while being very objective and impartial as tasked under state law with which they are authorized to be a commission of the city. And some of the desired attributes of a Planning Commission there that we look for are to be collaborative, to be analytical, to be professional, sort of crisp public speaking skills. And sometimes they are confronted with controversial issues even between neighbors or at a larger level with the Bay Hill specific plan or other development projects. So they really need to be able to look at the information presented before them and the testimony presented at a hearing and to be objective and impartial. So I hope that provides you with some information.
Thank you. Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for any nominations that they wish to make. And then we'll go ahead and if I get a nomination, I'll be looking for a second and then we'll go through that until we have a list and then we'll vote. So nominations.
Okay. Let's do the chair.
I've got two ladies here, so I can't even say ladies first. Vice Mayor.
I'd like to nominate Val Morgan.
Is there a second for Val?
I'll second that.
Other nominations from the floor, please. Go ahead.
Can I go?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Tom Hamilton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Other nominations from the floor.
I'd like to nominate Stephen Seymour.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there any other nominations? Okay. I show that there are two candidates, Val and Tom, who've received a nomination and a second. Is there any action by council? Or do we want to take them separately? What's the wish?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make sure you take public comment before the vote.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
I have no public speaker cards.
Whose feedback is that? Is there anybody on this conduct? Okay. Action from council?
Move to approve the, or do we vote on the two people who've gotten seconds?
However council wants to do, we can take it one or two together, however it's wished.
Okay, I'll vote for Val Morgan.
All those in favor of Val, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Unanimous. And I'm sorry, Michael, is that? Michael's under the weather, so I'm having a hard time hearing him. Next action.
I'll move to nominate Tom Hamilton. I'll second.
Okay. Motion made in second to approve Tom Hamilton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, five-oh. Okay, congratulations to Tom and Val. And then the only question I have to our staff is because I know one of the concerns was wanting to get them on quickly and then I know in practice we would wait two weeks and be kind enough to bring them and then have them sworn in. I don't know if we could do that. It might be something that maybe staff can discuss to see if it's important to maybe get them on faster.
What I can do is I'll offer to Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Morgan to swear them in my office as soon as possible, maybe even sometime this week, just so that we can make sure that they're able to vote at the next Planning Commission meeting. If you would like, we can bring them forward at the next meeting to do a ceremonial swearing in front of council and members of the public.
I think that's something that we've done that's appropriate and good for the community to see, but I think the staff may be appreciative of getting them on board. Okay. Now let's move on to our next item, please. Oh, and by the way, I do want to say to Mark and Stephen, thank you for applying because obviously it's the volunteers that make it happen. And as a person who has not received a position on a committee commissioner board twice in my life here in San Bruno, I appreciate going through the process. Next.
Item 6B, receive the mid-year financial update report as of December 31st, 2018 and adopt a resolution approving the second quarter budget amendment for the fiscal year 2018-19 operating and capital budget.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Keith DiMartini, the Finance Director for the city. It's my pleasure to present the Quarter II Fiscal Year 2018-19 Financial Projection to you this evening. The objective of this evening's presentation is twofold. One is to receive the Quarter II report as of the end of December 31st, 2018, and number two, adopt a resolution amending the current fiscal year budget for operating and capital expenditures by approving of various budget amendments described in the staff report, which I will summarize here with you this evening. So the agenda is just to provide a really brief overview of the current fiscal year operating budget. I'll go into a little bit of detail on the general fund, the enterprise fund, and the internal service funds, their projection through mid-year, provide an overview of the budget amendments, and then my request to council. The city's current fiscal year begins on July 1st, 2018, and it ends on June 30th, 2019. This evening, I'll be presenting an overview of data through the end of December 31st, 2018, midway through the fiscal year. I'll plan to come back to you sometime in April to provide an update through the end of Q3. And then the Quarter IV update will typically occur during our comprehensive annual financial statement review, which happens typically in January for the entire fiscal year's worth of activity. So the city does have existing budget challenges with a $1.7 million deficit that is funded by the use of fund balance in the general fund. Tonight's update will provide insight into how we project to end this current fiscal year. The revenue pie chart on the left shows the proportional share of major revenue sources in the general fund, with the majority of funding coming through property tax and sales tax. And then on the expenditure pie chart on the right, you will see that the major city functions that are funded by the general fund are 62% for the public safety functions. Police and fire departments, they have a 24-hour operation and they provide a full complement of services to the community. And again, just a reminder, these are pie charts just for the city's general fund. The city does receive revenue and funds critical operations in various enterprises and special revenue funds as well, including, for example, the water and the wastewater funds, which do represent a significant allocation of resources for operations and capital improvements for our infrastructure. So I'll just present a really high-level overview of our revenues through the end of Q2 of the current fiscal year compared to the same timeframe last fiscal year. So in summary, you'll see that through Q2, we have expended about 45% of our total budget, which is exactly the same as where we were last fiscal year at the same point in time. Property tax is typically paid by property owners in two installments, in December and April, so we got a substantial amount of property tax revenue in December. For sales tax, revenues are approximately $500,000 more compared to the same period last year. The California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, it's formerly the Board of Equalization at the state level, they've made progress in catching up processing many state sales tax remittances after a pretty significant delay with the new software implementation that they embarked on last year. We do retain a sales tax advisor and working with them, we project to be on target, on budget for our sales tax revenue. So moving on to our general fund expenditures, just an overview through Q2 compared to last fiscal year at the same time. Our expenditures through Q2 are at 51% of total budget, which is just slightly higher than 50% where we were last fiscal year at this time. Our second quarter expenditures were $24.5 million as shown here. And all these departments in the general fund, they are, in my opinion, within an acceptable range at this point of the fiscal year. It's nothing to be concerned about. We plan on either coming in at or slightly under budget towards the end of the fiscal So just a summary of our four enterprise funds. Water and wastewater revenues for the second quarter came in as expected. They include six months of service charges from the five-year rate plan that the City Council approved back in May of 2017. The cable revenues are consistent to last year at the same time as well, showing that they're coming in just about on budget for their expenditures versus their revenues. And then the stormwater fees are collected through the county property tax roll with a first payment expected in December. Again, no major issues that I see at this time for any of our enterprise funds. So just a really high-level summary of the four internal service funds. Again, just a reminder, these funds operate more like a business and they exclusively support the city's internal operations. Charges for these funds are transacted on a monthly basis in the Finance Department based on allocations that are adopted in the adopted budget every fiscal year. You'll see there is a slight increase in self-insurance expenditures through the second quarter compared to the second quarter at the same time last fiscal year. Our general liability insurance premiums and claim costs for workers' compensation has increased a little bit. And this is something that we'll be looking at very closely as we're entering into budget development for fiscal year 1920. So just in summary, going through a number of tables with you now, my major takeaways in the general fund are that revenues are coming in as expected. There's no major issue with any of our revenue sources in the general fund. Our expenditure run rates are within a normal, acceptable range that I would expect to see at this point in time during the fiscal year. And there really are no major issues that are bubbling to the top for me to report to council at this time. Again, same thing with our enterprise funds and our internal service funds, normal, expected activity. And now that we have six months of actual expenditure and revenue data, I'll be working very closely with department staff to use up-to-date data as we prepare our fiscal year 1920 budget. That's much more real-time, much more accurate, real-projection data we can use to develop our budget proposals for you. The staff report does list a number of budget amendments that we're requesting City Council approval this evening. There are five requests for the general fund that we are proposing to use available fund balance. I do want to make sure that you are aware that this reduction in fund balance, if council is to approve it, of about $70,000, does not impact our current reserve policy thresholds of retaining funds equaling 25% of our total annual general fund expenditures. In other words, we have capacity to appropriate this money. It will not impact our reserve policy. The first item is the city is intending to enter into agreement with a property tax consulting firm for $7,500 for this fiscal year. We would like this firm to conduct a variety of technical auditing functions on our property tax revenue base with matching property taxes with business licenses, comparing with other jurisdictions. We will also be getting some really great advanced reporting capability from the consultant and we will plan to request ongoing funding for these services in the 1920 budget. The second item is the city intending to enter into an agreement with a transient occupancy tax consulting firm for the amount not to exceed $20,000. We're proposing that this firm would conduct a full-scale audit on the 12 hotels located in San Bruno. They'll be looking at comparing the accuracy of their file lodging records with returns and activity reports, both at their desk and onsite at the hotels. This is a one-time audit request, so this will not be a recurring request, but we would revisit in a future subsequent budget cycle if we intend to do this again. The third item is a request to approve a budget so that we can process a second amendment with our agreement with Economic and Planning Systems Incorporated. They're the consulting firm that were integral in getting us the NEXUS study for the Development Impact Fee Program. There was additional services that the city required, EPS, to perform as we were making technical updates to the study, from feedback received from the public hearings, as well as drafting and revising the ordinance and the resolution to present to council. We'd also like to appropriate $4,700 for public works to increase the postage fee budget for costs associated with public outreach for the Scott Street Grade Separation Project. The city did receive a grant, but the city is required to fund the public noticing requirement costs. And then the final general fund request is for $25,000 for public works to increase their professional services budget to perform surveying for land dedication that has not yet been completed on El Camino Real at San Bruno Avenue Road. yet been completed on El Camino Real at San Bruno Avenue roadway expansion and geotechnical studies. There's one request in the Solid Waste Grant Fund for $3,700. The revenue was budgeted accurately in fiscal year 1819 and completely, but this is an additional appropriation on the expenditure side so that we can use all of the the grant revenue that the city has brought in, and it will allow us to purchase additional trash receptacles at various park locations. There are a number of requests in the Water Enterprise Fund for $13,500 for additional gas and oil expenses. There were some underestimation of what the expenses should be, and so we would like to increase the appropriation there. $85,000 for additional contractual services with West Valley Construction for repairs at for that were resulted from multiple water main breaks at Shelter Creek, Sweeney Ridge, Tank 7, and other locations. $35,000 for additional water quality testing and laundry services. This is anticipated due to more water breaks this current fiscal year than were originally And then the last item on the water fund is $35,000 to rent a portable generator at the water pump station, which is an essential facility that provides potable water for fire flow. There is a there is a current emergency standby generator that has experienced a leak in the diesel tank, and we can no longer use it, so we need to purchase this portable generator, and staff will continue to look at the feasibility of the long-term solution of this going forward. In the wastewater fund, there's a request for $624,499, which represents a shortfall with not really a shortfall, but basically not complete information that we received in working with South San Francisco on our quality control plant for what the annual allocation for our contribution should be for the debt service on that facility. The original estimate we received was was significantly lower. We do have available unappropriated funds in the wastewater fund to appropriate this money, and this is consistent with prior fiscal year amounts and what is expected in the upcoming budget year. And then finally, Measure A, a request for $80,000 to conduct a traffic study for the Scott Street Grade Separation Project, and it reflects a proposal from a consulting firm along the west side of Scott Street. So my request to council this evening is to receive the second quarter financial update report as of the end of as of the end of December 31st, 2018, and I request that you adopt a resolution approving of the second quarter budget amendment for the fiscal year 1819 operating and capital budget. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions for the Director?
Nope, I'm good.
Any action by council? It's a resolution?
So I let me think. Move to approve the resolution.
Second, please.
I second.
Melissa?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Next item.
Item 6C, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Belichi and Associates for the design of the Avenue's 3-1 sewer and water main replacement project in an amount not to exceed $499,092.
Mr. Director, Tam.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item in front of you tonight is regards to the water design contract for the Avenue's 3-1 sewer and water main replacement project. The agenda for the presentation is as follows. Today, I'll provide a brief background on the project, and I'll provide an overview of the consultant selection and criteria used to select a consultant. Then I'll discuss the scope of work, the budget, and the schedule, and lastly, the alternatives and the recommendations. So here's a brief background on how the project evolved. The city completed the water master plan in 2012 and then as well as the sewer master plan in 2014. A 10-year infrastructure improvement work plan was also developed and subsequently approved by the City Council in June of 24, 2014. The work plan included addressing issues such as regulatory deadline to complete the sewer capacity projects, replacement of aging and undersized sewer infrastructure to reduce INI, which is stands for infiltration and inflow, replacement of aging undersized water infrastructure to improve the fire flow reliability and reduce pipeline leaks. So based on considerations, priorities were developed to focus on implementing and completing the sewer capacity projects to meet the regulatory completion deadlines and replacing old infrastructure in the downtown area and surrounding neighborhoods. So the Avenue 3-1 sewer and water main replacement project was identified as one of the projects in the work plan. The primary purpose of the project is to reduce this risk of sanitary sewer overflows and improve the reliability of the water system. Slide shows the location of the areas for the Avenue's 3-1 project. The area is bounded by Canes, Genovin Avenue, El Camino, and Semathea Avenue. All the streets where the pipelines will be replaced are indicated on a list there, which are along the east of El Camino. The project will replace about 7,900 feet of water pipelines and 7,100 feet of sewer pipelines, and both water and sewer pipelines are being replaced at the same time to minimize construction impacts to the public. Once the construction of the pipelines are completed, the roadway will be resurfaced. The completion of the project will provide residents with a more reliable water and sewer service to prevent future water leaks and sewer overflows and improved roadway roadway surface. So to select the consultant for the project, staff issued the request for proposal in January, and the city received a total of five proposals for the project. Then these proposals were evaluated on the criteria such as the project understanding, whether the firm understood the overall project and the scope of the work, scope of the project, and qualifications and experience of the project manager and the team, qualifications of the firm relating to whether they have experience with the design of sewer and water infrastructure, and the firm's experience with design and construction of projects within the residential corridors. We also reviewed the manpower allocations for labor effort to determine how it compares to other firms in order to determine whether the firm can effectively and efficiently complete the project. Although the city is not required to consider cost as a criteria in the selection process, the costs of design services were reviewed. The cost proposals ranged from $45,000 to $600,000. A couple of the lower-cost firms didn't include information in their proposal regarding the work that was required as part of the scope of work, therefore therefore their costs were lower than other firms, and some didn't provide a detailed scope of work as well. Based on evaluation, staff is recommending to award the contract to Belichi and Associates, and this firm has completed similar projects for the city of Berkeley, Millbury, Sunnyvale, and as well as San Bruno. And the firm for San Bruno, the firm completed the design of the Canes and Semathea Avenue Sewer Bypass Project, as well as the Crystal Springs Road Sewer Replacement Project. The Canes Avenue and Semathea Avenue Bypass Project was completed in 2015, and the Crystal Springs Road Sewer Replacement Project is currently under construction. As for the scope of work and schedule for the project, these are the list of various scope of work that are needed for the design of the pipelines. It includes performing site investigation, evaluating alignment alternatives, geotechnical investigation to determine the soil type, groundwater table level, and soil resistivity for corrosion, potholing and surveying, corrosion design, completing detailed final design and preparing bid documents, and also providing construction support services. So as for the project schedule, it is currently anticipated that the project design and construction will take approximately 10 months each. And as for the fiscal impact budget, the project is an established CIP project in the Water and Sewer Main Improvement Replacement Program. The cost for this contract is $499,000. It's within the total budget of $600,000 available in the fiscal year 2018-19 budget, so there's for no additional appropriation is being requested. So there are a couple of alternatives. In the staff report, if the council chooses not to award the project tonight, first is to direct, you know, further review of the submitted proposals for selection of different firm for from the proposals. As previously mentioned, staff selected the firm based on the criteria to evaluate the proposals and believe Belichi and Associates is the best firm for the project. The second alternative is to request staff to issue a new RFPs. Request proposals, since the city's received five proposals, and we don't anticipate, you know, obtaining any additional proposals from different firms on these projects. So therefore, the recommendation by staff is to for the council to move forward with the project, which is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract or agreement with the Belichi and Associates for the design of this project. This concludes my concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? More? Mari?
Ladies first.
No questions. No question.
Mari?
Yes, please. Three things. So when when we mention roadway roadway resurfacing, are we talking about trench T-cut repaving, resurface? Are we talking about entire street width?
Entire street width.
Entire. So that's huge.
Correct.
Right? People have been asking about, hey, when when's my street going to get repaved? Well, you kind of have to wait for the work to get done where you replace the water and the sewer underneath, otherwise you're doing the work twice. So thank you for that. The next question is regarding the sewer laterals. Where are we with requiring the 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 property owner to address the sewer, the upper sewer lateral? Because we take care of the lower sewer sewer lateral. Is that the latest change? I don't remember.
No, I believe the council back in 2015 transferred the lower laterals to the the property owners, so the maintenance and the repair and responsibility of these lower laterals is not within the cities, excuse me, within the city's jurisdiction.
So a scenario could be we're replacing the main, and we come up to a sewer lateral, and we're like, wow, that one's messed up. Are we videoing each of them as we go along to kind of make sure that we don't have a situation where the property owner goes, well, you guys damaged it, you know, it was it's been operating fine? How is that going to work where if we identify a damaged sewer lateral, and then we're going to tell the property owner, hey, you're responsible for this repair? And at that point, since our contractor's there right in the street, do they have the option to utilize? Maybe that's for later on when we deal with the actual construction side, but I just kind of want to have an understanding of where that's going to flow when it comes down to making that determination of replacing the sewer lateral.
So what what's we've done for the the two projects, the recent two projects, the First Avenue Sewer Replacement Project, as well as the Crystal Springs Sewer Replacement Project, we sent letters to the residents along the, you know, the the location where the pipelines are being replaced to request them to televise their laterals, to determine whether they want to participate in the the replacement of the sewer lateral. So we would provide that, you know, the bid is structured to request the contractor to provide a bid for the replacement of those sewer laterals, and whatever that cost of that bid item is for replacement is passed on to the the homeowners if they're interested in replacing the sewer lateral. If not, you know, it's there's nothing that we can really do to force the resident to to replace the laterals if they're not if they don't participate in the in the program.
Okay. And we've did we have good success with with our our recent, I guess, requests for them to video, or we had any problems with with any of those residents that had an issue with the sewer lateral? Everything's been good, or how did it work?
For the First Avenue Sewer Project, there was only one resident that participated. For the recent Crystal Springs Project, there were three residents that participated in the program.
My last question, I'm sorry. In your presentation, they mentioned corrosion design and with does that mean that they're going to go to ductile iron pipe? Or is it an option for the designer to come up with with what's best because there's very little corrosion, there's no corrosion for PVC pipe, and it's a lot cheaper to install and maintain, repair? I'm just wondering, are we giving the designer the freedom to choose what which materials the pipe is?
The design for the water pipeline will be PVC, and, you know, with with PVC pipelines at the fittings, there will have to be, you know, cast iron, a ductile iron fitting, right? So ductile iron fittings are used as, you know, for horizontal and vertical bends, and at the the street intersections, you know, we install a T or a cross depending on the intersection, and with three, you know, or four valves, right? At a cross, we would install four valves, at a T, we would install three valves. And at those clusters, you know, there will need there will need to be some corrosion cathodic protection design.
Right, sacrificial inodes.
Correct. And so that's part of the 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 work.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. That's it. Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Or, I mean, Vice Mayor?
I was just reminded what Councilmember Medina was saying. I know that at the recent fires in Paradise and Camp, I'm looking at you because you told me about them, some of the cities did have PVC pipes for their piping, and during the fires, pardon me? The pipes melted because of the fires, and so the water was they they had no access to the water. So I don't know if we've looked into that, if that's something we shouldn't be doing. I'm I'm looking at a member of the audience who had informed me of this recently, so I don't know if if he wants to make a comment about it or not. No? Okay. Anyway, I it triggered my memory, and so I'm I was a little concerned about it.
It's okay. No, it's good. It's a good comment.
Director, any?
Yeah, we were aware of the PVC pipe situations in those two cities, and and, you know, it's 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 a cost issue too, right? And so, you know, we only have a limited amount of budget, and we have a lot of areas of water mains to replace too, and then with ductile iron pipe, it there's it it costs a lot more. It's could be, you know, twice as much as what we're paying for with PVC pipelines. So, you know, that's something that we can continue to evaluate, and, you know, there are other pipe materials that are available, like, you know, high-density polyethylene for, you know, water pipelines as well. But I know that, you know, most agencies, you know, they they have used PVC quite a bit on on water mains replacement projects, and and we'll continue to evaluate for ours.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Not action? This is a the Director's asking for a resolution?
So I'll introduce the resolution.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Listen.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Item D, please.
Item 6D, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Friar and Lareda Inc. for design of the Spyglass Drive Storm Drain Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $298,600 and appropriating $70,000 from the General Capital Reserve Fund.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Item in front of you tonight is to award the design contract for the Spyglass Drive Storm Drain Improvements Project. So the agenda for this presentation is very similar to the previous one that I provided. Provide a brief background on the project, then I'll provide an overview of the consultant selection and criteria used to select a consultant. I'll discuss the scope of work, the schedule, and the the budget, as well as the alternatives and recommendations. So let's start with the the project location. So here's a map that shows the location of Spyglass Drive, which is indicated in the yellow oval. The Spyglass Drive neighborhood is located west of Skyline Boulevard and north of Sharp Park Road. The neighborhood can be accessed from the intersection of Sharp Park Road and Pacific Heights Boulevard. Here's another area that shows a close-up of Spyglass Drive and a portion of the the storm system that's kind of indicated in a green there. So the path of the storm drain system is depicted in green. The bottom arrow indicates the storm flow from the Pacific Heights neighborhood into a manhole that's located in Sharp Park Road. Then the storm pipeline conveys the water in a pipe between the two houses across the cul-de-sac, and then between two other houses on the north side of Spyglass Drive. Then the storm system turns east and becomes an open, you know, discharge into a valley gutter, and then then heads, you know, valley gutter all the way behind these houses towards the, you know, the Spyglass Pump Station at the end of the other cul-de-sac, then eventually it discharges down downhill. So as for the background, the city completed the storm master plan in 2014. The master plan The master plan evaluated the storm system and identified capacity deficient pipelines and large box coverts for improvements. The improvement recommendations totaled about $20 million, which is in 2014 dollars. There's currently no dedicated funding source for these improvements at this moment. And then a portion of this Spyglass drainage areas was not included in the assessment of the storm master plan because it's an isolated area from the rest of the other city. So, the storm flows from this, you know, as I mentioned, from upstream of Spyglass Drive into the Spyglass neighborhood, then it discharges towards the Pacific Ocean instead of towards San Bruno Avenue, you know, the channel behind Seventh Avenue, like the other areas in the city. So, during intense storm events, the storm system in Spyglass Drive overflows due to insufficient pipeline capacity to convey the flow. The properties adjacent to the storm system experienced multiple flooding. Over the years, included damage to the properties. So, the picture on the right on the bottom was taken at one of the backyards of the, one of the property adjacent to the storm pipeline. And you can clearly see the level of water from the marking on the wall there. In order to prevent flooding through the residential properties, staff from Public Works installed sandbags around the perimeter annually during late fall and then removed them in the spring. So, here's just some pictures of the sandbags installation around one of the properties. So, and here's a snapshot here of what's going on in that area. So, snapshot is from a video across the street from the neighborhood, from that 1920 Spyglass Drive there. So, it shows insufficient pipeline capacity at the location. The location where the water is overflowing is the drain inlet. The storm drain pipeline is located between those two properties that you see on the screen. So, to select a consultant, you know, staff issued RFP back in December of last year, and then we received two proposals. And these proposals were evaluated, you know, with similar criteria that you saw in a previous presentation, that the project understanding regarding whether the firm understood the overall project scope, qualifications of the project manager and team, qualification to the firm relating to their experience with evaluating and designing storm water conveyance systems, and then manpower allocations to determine, to make sure that the firm will complete the project effectively and efficiently. And then although the city's not required to consider cost again on this project, in the selection of the process, those were reviewed, the cost proposals ranged from about $262,000 to $300,000, you know, if all of the options were inclusive of the work. So, based on evaluation, staff is recommending to award the contract to Fryer and Lareda. The firm has completed similar design projects for the cities of Burlingame, Pacifica, San Francisco, Livermore, and Mountain View. As for the scope of work and schedule, the work includes, you know, assessing alternatives to mitigate flooding issues, then determining the recommended alternatives, then proceeding with the design of the new storm facility. So, the task includes, you know, the site investigations, hydraulic modeling and analysis to determine the flow rate and the storm conveyance system size needed, evaluation of alternatives to alleviate flooding, looking at possibly, possibility of like a drainage basin or a pipe conveyance system, evaluating storm drain alignment alternatives, performing geotechnical work, and surveying, poeholing, permitting, and sequo as well, and corrosion design if needed, and completing of final design and preparation of bid documents as well. So, and providing construction supports at the end of the bid construction period. So, as for the project schedule, it's currently anticipated, again, for 10 months each for the design and construction and for the fiscal impact. Oops, sorry. Went one step too far. For the fiscal impact, the budget includes an appropriation of $300,000 in the project, and there's currently a carryover balance of $284,000 remaining. So, the cost of this signed contract is about $298,600. And staff is requesting appropriation of about $70,000 to cover the design and anticipated costs for the project management. So, staff understand that there's no dedicated funding source for the design or construction of the storm facilities and have looked for grant opportunities to fund this project. So, back in October of 2017, we submitted an application to the California Office of Emergency Services as part of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, call it FEMA DR, you know, 4305, to request funding for both the design and construction of these improvements. Staff followed up multiple times with staff from Cal OES and regarding the application, and was informed that the city application was on a waiting list. There were multiple staff turnovers at the grant administrator level at Cal OES. However, staff was able to get ahold of a representative and provided additional information to them back in October of last year. And the city has not heard back regarding the status of the application. And even if the city was awarded the grant, the city will still be required to provide a match in front of 25% of the total grant amount. So, here are the alternatives. If the city council chooses not to award the project tonight, you know, and to, you know, the first is to defer the project. And as mentioned in the presentation, the area is prone to flooding, and staff will need to continue to set up sandbags on properties annually. And the second is to direct staff to choose a different design firm from the submitted proposals. Since then, the city received only two proposals from the RFP that was sent to multiple firms, staff believe that we selected a firm that is the best qualified to perform the work on this project. The third is to request the staff to issue the new RFP, and this would delay the project, and staff does not believe will receive any additional proposals since the first RFP resulted in two firms submitting the proposals. So therefore, staff is recommending to council to move forward with the project, is to authorize the city managers to execute an agreement with Fryer and Lareda for the design of the Spyglass Drive Storm Drain Improvements Project, and also appropriating $70,000 from the General Capital Fund Reserve. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the director?
Through the chair. So, is there any way we can continue trying to reach out for funding for the grant and then continue with the project in addition?
Yes. So, I think it's actually better if there's shovel-ready projects that are in work. So, I think that's the approach that we're taking. Initially, when we applied for the grant, the project hasn't been designed. We had some preliminary layouts on some of the alternatives that we were looking at, but besides that, there's no other, you know, design documents.
And then I will say, I've been down there in times of heavy rains, and I know that staff's had to do a lot of work to actually really prevent a lot of damage, so great job for staff on that. But yeah, this is definitely a needed project, and, you know, the amount of cost and money and damage could greatly exceed with the number of the homes are involved. So, definitely, thank you for the project.
Mari?
Yes, I'm in support of this project. It needs to get done. What I was going to ask is, from our, in our design projects, should we start thinking about allowing a contingency so that when, for whatever good reason it comes forward, that staff can proceed with getting the work done and not having to come back to council? Maybe a 10% contingency that? Just wanted to share that with you.
Sure. So, I think the challenge with this particular project and most of our projects is that the design is oftentimes less than the construction cost. And so, we don't know the final solution here, but it is likely that the full construction cost will be 1.5 million or more. And so, 300,000 just gets us to design. And so, I think that's important to reiterate that this is a significant challenge where we do not have a dedicated stormwater funding system. And with the liability and the damage that's being caused to the homes, we have to proceed, and we found a way to fund the $300,000 for design. And I just want to congratulate staff for doing everything they can to apply for grant funds. But it is not certain that we will receive state or federal grant funds for this project. And so, if we do not, we will be returning to council, likely with a fully-designed project with a cost that could exceed 1.5 million dollars, where we do not currently have the wherewithal to do that project in our stormwater fund. So, we would be looking to unrestricted general fund reserves or some of our emergency reserves to do that. I hope it doesn't come to that point, but this is a significant issue that the community face where we frankly do not have the resources to fund the project.
Any other questions?
No, it's just sobering news, right? The whole room got quiet. All right.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then there's a request on the resolution, the expenditure?
Motion to adopt a resolution to approve the Spyglass.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Listen.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Item E, please.
Item 6E, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 11.40 to Title 11, Buildings, Construction, and Fire Protection of the San Bruno Municipal Code Establishing Flood Plane Management Requirements.
Director?
Hi. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Darcy Smith, the Community and Economic Development Director. It's my pleasure to provide you with the report for the introduction of this ordinance. And one correction, I wanted to be 6B, but I got moved to 6E, and it's the last item. So, the agenda for tonight is to-
We'll see if we can, on the next agenda, get you moved up.
The agenda for tonight? Oh, sorry. Here. This is, I was B, now I'm E. Okay. But the agenda for tonight is to first give you some background, just to bring you and the community members up to speed about the background related to the FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency Flood Insurance Study Reports and the Flood Insurance Rate Maps, also known as the FERMs. And I'll provide information about the National Flood Insurance Program requirements, which are leading to these flood plane management regulations. So, I'll summarize and focus on the ordinance and how it affects the city and the residents, and at the end, we'll have time for any questions you may have. And while I'm presenting this item and authored the staff report, I just wanted to point out all the staff that worked on it, in case you have questions for them later. Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director, who's been working on the FEMA mapping issue for many years, and Mark Zoffrono, the city attorney, who's also been engaged, and Roy Bernald, who's here tonight, our chief building official, also worked on the ordinance, and it's within his title of the municipal code. And he will have the large task of implementing the ordinance and applying it through the building permit process and also the annual reporting. So, the objective for this item tonight is to waive the first reading and introduce this ordinance, which will add Chapter 11.40 to Title 11 of the San Bruno Municipal Code, and that will establish, for the first time, the city's flood plane management requirements. In July of 2014, this process really was initiated when FEMA completed the engineering study of the coastal hazards. That was part of a California Coastal Analysis and Mapping Project for the San Francisco Bay. And FEMA completed that on a broad level to implement the National Flood Insurance Program, which has been around since the 60s. This study resulted in updated Flood Insurance Study Reports and those FERMs maps for the city, which you can see here. So, the FEMA study identified properties within largely the Bel Air neighborhood as potentially subject to inundation by flooding from the bay. And this is called a higher-risk flood zone, and it is Zone AE. There are many different zones, and this one is AE. And this map, which is shown here, also called the FERM, was issued back in August 2015. And this kind of gives you the broader perspective of where this flooding actually occurs from. Again, it's from the bay. You can see the airport here. The airport has some levees. There's also some tidal gate structures and navigable floes, but you can see it kind of all moves inland in a major storm event. So, I wanted to just give you some high points of the governmental process timeline. The main takeaway from this slide is that this has been an ongoing effort for many years, and the city has been working really diligently on this issue to ensure the city's interests and the community's interests are represented and voiced to FEMA. We've also worked through US Congresswoman Jackie Spears' office and County Supervisor David Pine's office to express our interest in this process. And although the appeal was denied, there have been many questions posed of, well, what happens next? And so, the city had an agreement with the County of San Mateo and the City of South San Francisco to study one of the flooding sources that could potentially mitigate this. It is a multi-jurisdictional effort, also involves the airport, of course. At this time, there's no identified or funded projects to move forward, but it is something the city is aware of. And all of these, these many years led to October 2018, when the city was officially noticed by FEMA that they'll initiate this FERM map adoption process, which takes a total of six months. And the main requirement imposed on the city in that six-month process is the adoption of this flood plane management ordinance. So, this is the only thing the city is required to do before the maps become effective, which will be April 5th. So, I want to point out some key items related to the community engagement. We've had some questions from the community raised. So, we did have a community meeting, which is in August. And we also have sent out three informational letters to the community. We built a website, which has been active for many years with a wealth of information, especially related to just basic questions, how do I buy flood insurance? Where do I buy it from? And we most recently informed the residents on a third letter that was sent in November that there was a deadline to purchase the discounted flood insurance. And that deadline sort of starts at this point and goes for a year. So, as a voluntary measure, we anticipate mailing out a fourth informational letter to those residents, informing them of that window, because that's really the critical window. And we have noticed or provided the noticing related to this flood plane management ordinance on the website. But it's really important to remember that the lenders, and not the city and not FEMA, are really the ones that communicate the requirement to purchase the insurance. It's related to mortgages that are federally insured or backed, and so the lenders are the main point of communication with the residents, related to insurance. So, it's really important to emphasize the need to do[1629.08] So, it's really important to emphasize the need to do this ordinance. It's really driven by the city's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. So, if we don't adopt this ordinance, there are some pretty significant consequences that I outlined in the staff report. I just want to touch on the highlights here. So, without adoption of this ordinance, the city can't participate in this National Flood Insurance Program, which provides the most affordable rates to the consumers. But more importantly, the city would face, and the residents would face the penalty of not having federal disaster assistance in the event of a flood, and also not being able to qualify or purchase for federally-backed mortgage insurance or loan guarantees. So, for those reasons and many more, the city is proceeding with this and the FEMA requirements. So the ordinance is really a standard ordinance implemented through building permits that serves to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. It's preventative measures that are imposed during construction, largely. FEMA, in working with the State of California, developed a model ordinance that meets their strict requirements, so we followed that model ordinance. But I do want to emphasize that this was an ordinance that we did collaborate with FEMA, because the city had a few minor modifications that we wanted to make to the ordinance to ensure our interests were voiced. And this final ordinance has been reviewed by FEMA and determined to meet their requirements. And it was something, I want to emphasize, that we went back and forth with FEMA on many times, so it has been something we've been working on for several months. So the ordinance will accomplish some primary items. It will establish the city's floodplain management requirements for construction and land uses. It will designate our Chief Building Official, who's here tonight, as the floodplain administrator. It will also set up provisions for variances and appeals should property owners seek those, and have an appeals board. And it will also adopt the maps. It's kind of one of the key features that's inherently obvious, but I want to point that out, because it was one of the modifications that we requested to make. The model ordinance didn't include any language related to the city's right to challenge and appeal future revisions, and so we inserted that language, and it was accepted by FEMA that we will obviously want to preserve that right to challenge and appeal any future revisions. So the ordinance would, again, set the minimum construction standards, and those are the real heart of the ordinance, is that if someone were to propose new construction, they would be regulations that would be applied depending on the scope of the project. So, I'll highlight some of the projects that would trigger this ordinance, but I want to emphasize not all projects would necessarily trigger these requirements. And the main thing is there's construction methods, which are industry-wide, used throughout the country where there is flooding. There are various sources, and so the heart of it is sort of different construction materials, methods of construction, that will minimize flood damage. And there is a certification process, so ultimately, through the construction process, prior to the city issuing a final of the building permits that's issued, often there's a validation through a registered civil engineer and architect who can provide the validation process. So some of the examples of the sort of more typical construction standards and requirements are that new residential structures are designed to have that lowest floor level raised to be at or above what's called the base flood elevation. So you can see that picture here. Sometimes it's a more traditional home design where the home has a porch that's elevated and crawl space, so it isn't necessarily atypical construction, but the goal is to raise that first flood level above the base flood elevation. But as many of you know, when you have sort of a basement, you might put some utilities, things like some furnace down there. And so there's also an element of sort of trying to flood-proof what's typically found underneath the house in the crawl space. So, you can see the example here, and some of this, again, is not necessarily that atypical, just in the course of construction. A lot of folks do want a raised elevation. So the ordinance applies, as I said, to new construction. The classic example would be a brand-new house, a brand-new commercial structure, but it also is applicable if an existing home is proposing to undergo substantial improvements, and that could be any reconstruction or rehabilitation where that improvement or that construction project has a cost that equals 50% of the market value of the home. So it's possible a second-story addition would trigger that, or a big first-floor addition to a home. But that valuation and cost is determined by the city through the permit process. And in my experience of having administered one of these in the past, sometimes there's a back and forth with the scope of the project to bring it under this threshold. So it is something that the city kind of works with homeowners on. So, again, some examples of projects that might be exempt might be a simple interior remodeling, or a first-floor addition or a second-story addition that wouldn't hit that substantial improvement threshold of 50%. But also, there are other types of construction that don't involve human habitation, like a detached shed in someone's backyard or a garage. Those wouldn't be triggered to meet these floodproofing requirements, because, again, you're not necessarily exposing a huge, high-value structure or humans to the exposure of flooding. Also, really important to mention that the ordinance does exempt projects related to code violations, if those code violations are determined to be related to, like, ensuring a safe home for human habitation. Also important to mention, there are no city buildings that are subject to this ordinance. So, that concludes my staff report, and I just want to summarize the ordinance and really give you the high points. I know it's a very long ordinance, but I want to emphasize that most of it did come from the model ordinance by FEMA, so while we worked to make a few minor modifications that we think are in the city's best interests, much of the text of that ordinance is very technical language that came from the model ordinance. But that concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have or refer them to the other city staff in attendance tonight.
We do have a speaker card.
Robert Rico.
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I want to thank Jimmy and his staff and everybody that's been working on this for so long, including Jackie Speer's office and Dave Pine. My main question is, what is the next steps that the city is going to take to get the needed information to all the people in the affected area in English and Spanish? And are there going to be any meetings or workshops to hold everybody's hand or hold those hands that need to be held as this goes forth, so that we can partake of the reduced costs for insurance going forward? And the other half of it, how is the city going to follow up with the City of South San Francisco, the airport, the county, so that someday in the future, everybody will have done their work, so that FEMA can come in and say, "You don't need flood insurance any longer"?
Thank you. Any other comments? Did you want to say anything? We're going to have Brian come to the...
Good evening. Brian Perkins, Congresswoman, Jackie Speer's office. With respect to Mr. Rico's question, I don't know what the city is going to do to follow up, but traditionally, what happens is the lenders themselves send out notices within about 90 days and inform the borrowers of the requirement. And they also reform the borrowers of the opportunity to buy, in effect, discounted insurance for that, and to get in on that discount opportunity. That seems to work pretty well, to get most of the folks involved in it, and we've had a few of these that I'm aware of in our district and across the state. It seems to work pretty well. There are hitches that come up. As Mr. Rico pointed out, language is sometimes a problem. There's also the problem sometime that the actual owner isn't in the home. It may be a relative who doesn't recognize the importance of this piece of mail, and they throw it out instead of giving it to the borrower. Ultimately, if the insurance isn't bought, and usually within the first year, the borrower discovers a new charge on their insurance, on their mortgage, and that is a charge for flood insurance. It's a forced-place policy by the lender. It's actually quite expensive, and that usually gets the attention of the borrower. And then if the borrower still doesn't make the purchase, then, again, this is outside of anything the city might do, the borrower might in fact lose the opportunity to buy grandfathered-priced insurance. So that's kind of the downside of the current process. But it is, at least in my experience, it's always that notice from the borrower, excuse me, from the lender to the borrower that really is a wake-up call for everybody. And our phones will light up, and I'll spend a lot of time talking to people, and folks will say they never heard about it before and so forth. So, yeah, thank you. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Brian. Anything else from staff, Ted?
Sure. I'll actually have Jimmy come up to talk about the notification, but we have purposely held off on another round of notifications until the April 5th date, when homeowners can purchase the discounted insurance, because a lot of communication happened. We feel like there's information out there in the community about it, and we really wanted that next communication to be action-oriented. And so we've held off in this intermediate time when we're working with FEMA on taking the necessary steps now that we lost the appeal and we have to move forward with the implementation process. Part of the other part of the question is, what are we doing to partner with South San Francisco and SFO to counsel? There is a number of things that are happening. One, there's the navigational slough, where there was, right now, an expired MLU between the county and South San Francisco to look at strategies for that slough, because while that slough is not within San Bruno, flooding of that slough could very much affect San Bruno. And so we did partially fund a study, and now that that study is done, it will be looking towards implementation, and there are conversations happening between South San Francisco and the City of San Bruno and the county on how to further that work. In addition, with the county's effort to establish a new agency, that is, I'm going to get it wrong, but the Flood Control and Sea Level Rise Resilience Agency, plus a couple more acronyms, there are a number of efforts as a part of that new agency that is trying to get started, that will help out with flood control. And as a part of that agency, the county is putting up about half of the operating cost for the first three years and asking for the cities to put up the other half. Our portion is $40,000 annually for the next three years, and I think coming up, we're going to have a presentation by Larry Patterson on that. And with council direction, we will include that $40,000 in the next-year budget and the next three-year budgets. And as a part of that agency, I know the county is working to not only get the 20 cities in the county to join, but to get SFO to be a partner in that agency as well. And so I think all the conversations are happening, but they're very long-term strategies.
Did I miss anything, Jimmy?
Good evening, again. So, the city manager is correct. The city has been coordinating with South San Francisco and, as well as San Mateo County regarding to the navigable slough project. The project study has been completed. The next phase of work is to look for grant opportunities for some funding for the next phase of work, which is the design, and then eventually, construction of some of the improvements that are indicated in the report. In addition, the staff has been coordinating with San Francisco Airport. There's a meeting that's being set up by their engineer, as well as myself, to discuss their project, which is the shoreline protection plan that they're putting together for the entire eight miles of their surrounding, their airport. So that's something that we're looking forward to, having our engineers attend the meeting to learn more about what they're doing and their schedule for those projects. But the city is continuing to coordinate with the County of San Mateo as well. We still need to also coordinate with the City of Millbury, because there's a location where a portion of the water does come travel through from the Millbury and up San Bruno. So that's something that we'll be looking into in the near future to coordinate with our neighboring agency. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's appropriate at this point, because I know folks are watching this show, to mention that the flood insurance at the moment, under current law, is a little bit under $500 per year if you get in for the grandfathered rate, and then they add on a $25 flat charge. And so the total charge, I always have to remind myself, is about $500 to start, and then it escalates from there until it gets to a full rate. And it takes about a decade for it to get up to the full price. The full price is not uniform by house. It's really dependent upon how high your house is flooded on the interior, so it's hard to tell any individual homeowner without them checking with their own engineer, with their insurance agent, what the final rate would be. But the range of increase can be from 5% to about 15% or 18% per year. I always get those mixed up. So it's, you know, it's not $1 million to start, but it does go up at a fairly substantial rate, because even 5% is more than folks on a fixed income, for example, can take. And we certainly would like to help the city at any time with any federal grant opportunities and writing letters of support and so forth. And we're also working with the airport on their project as well. Unfortunately, there's just a lot of places that are leaking. That's basically what it boils down to. So...
Questions of council?
Not a question, but I've made a comment. I just want to make sure that Brian and Jackie both know that we appreciate all the efforts they've been. I started out way in the beginning with Dave Pine, that we weren't even, as a city, notified if all this was happening. And then the supervisor and our senator worked together, and here we are. So, thank you very much, and we'll keep on trucking.
And Brian, while you're here, what are some possibilities on grant funding for this program?
Well, Mr. Tan alluded to it. FEMA's most likely source is hazard mitigation grants that would happen. There's also a chance to use federal grants through the Army Corps of Engineers. That's a longer-term strategy, and it really comes about as a result of this cooperative effort across the entire county, where you can give the Army Corps a nice, you know, resolved solution for a large part of the property. But we know that it happens, because this is exactly what's going down in the Alviso neighborhood in San Jose. And in fact, when I was out at the Bel Air School, someone said, gee, Senator Feinstein just got San Jose, I forgot what the amount of money was, it was quite a bit of millions. And I said, yeah, that's because they started 25 years ago with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they've been working on it, and this is just the latest phase. If you have one of these county-wide proposals that resolves a lot of issues, then you can go to Congress, you can compete against the Mississippi River, you can compete against the Allegheny River, and all these other sorts of things, which are competitive at that point. And that's why Congresswoman Speer's been so insistent that we get a county-wide agency, so that we actually get in a position to get all of this federal money that's otherwise going around the country. But these are long-term choices. It's not uncommon for it to take a decade in order to get one of those particular programs going. There are smaller Army Corps projects that are available, and that Mr. Tan and I will be talking about, I'm sure, soon. But ironically, most of that effort would have to be made by the property owners, which in this case are other jurisdictions and not San Bruno. So they'll have to make their own choices regarding how aggressive they are, and I'm sure they'll cooperate. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much.
Please.
Thank you very much. This is a recurring item where we are imposed some conditions, and the city pretty much has no opportunity to, and we did fight it, but...
Yes, we did.
And we have to deal with the consequence of not winning and dealing with this. So thank you for the internal, in-house municipal code, the new set of, what's the proper term for it?
Floodplain management regulations.
For that. Done in-house, no consultant needed for that. Right, great. In the presentation, you mentioned something about the appeal board. I just wanted to make sure, is that something that the city will need to have an appeal board, or is that our appeal goes to FEMA?
No, it's a city appeal board, consisting of myself, the Community Services Director, and the Public Works Director, and it would be an appeal board of the administrators' decision. So we have similar appeal boards set forth, and we find them to be an expeditious way to convene a board of city staff to review any appeal.
Okay, thank you. This definitely pertains to ADUs. If somebody was putting an ADU in their backyard, they would have to make sure it was at the right heights and so forth. Is there a, this is for everything that's new, so it's fine for somebody that has a house the way it is now, you're just going to have to get the insurance in the event you have that loan. Last thing is the timeline again. It was April 5th, right? That's when they...
That's when the new maps are effective.
And they have to have the insurance by when?
I think one year.
Well, to qualify for the discount, they'll have to buy it within the year, but as a matter of contract with their mortgage company, they really have to have it almost immediately, which is why the notices start to go out within 90 days.
Got it. I just wanted to confirm, we were going to send a notice out on the 5th?
We are going to ramp up our communication efforts around the date of the 5th. I'm not...
No, no, I'm just curious.
I don't want to outline the process, but yeah.
And we'll have a prominent place on our website, of course, and handouts for new construction. It'll be, okay, all right. So, just concerned about people always, I didn't know about it, and what am I going to do about it? So, we did our part, and we'll go from there. So thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments from council? For this action, there are two things. We would need a motion and a second to waive the first reading. So moved.
Second.
Allison?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. And then if we need somebody to introduce the ordinance, please.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Thank you. Brian, thank you for being here. Next, we'll move on to item seven, comments from council members. Michael? No, I agree? Laura?
No comments.
Real short, another storm's on its way, so everybody be prepared for that. I wanted to thank staff for the great work that was done in the last storm, so everybody be careful out there, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Okay, everybody be safe, and we'll go ahead and adjourn. The next regular city council meeting will be held on March 12th, 2019, at 7:00, right here at the San Bruno Senior Center. Meeting adjourned.